Should I just start this and leave it on the wide angle mark?
Yep, and if there's any problems, Lee's here, so he'll take care of it.
Are we still early?
Yeah. Yeah, I got a minute to go.
All right.
And the pledge is before the call for order, so we do that anytime. Is there a third suggestion or what him desire or any time to?
What's the answer?
We're all there.
Okay.
On three, one, two, three.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the law of the Constitution, one nation under the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Live here.
I'm remembering.
Yeah. Okay, so we can call the February ninth, twenty sixteen, council meeting to order. All council members present, Attorney Ryan, Attorney Rig, Administrator Ballson. Citizen comments. We have no citizen comments, so we move on to adapting the agenda. We have an order to adopt the agenda as it is, or are there making their corrections to the agenda?
I don't know when we adopt the agenda, unless there's somebody else who's going to jump in really quick.
Second second. On favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda. Are there any changes there, or do we have an order to accept consent agenda as printed?
So moved.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. So we move on to presentations, public hearings, and that would be David Jacobson, prosecuting attorney with the handle prosecution report.
Thank you, gentlemen, for the opportunity to come speak to you. I didn't, I don't believe I came and spoke to you guys last year. I recognize a lot of you guys and some, not maybe as much, but yeah, I'm glad to be here to present the report for two thousand fifteen for the municipal prosecution. I believe you guys all should have a copy of that in your back. Okay. So as far as just a brief little background, the city of Kenyon has a statutory obligation to handle certain prosecution offenses. And so it's okay if you don't know exactly what that role is, because most of the time, law enforcement, myself, county attorney's office, we struggle with it too. But basically, it's misdemeanors, adult, petty misdemeanors, petty misdemeanors and misdemeanors within the city limits, the city proper. And then certain offenses that are gross misdemeanors designated by statute. Most notably, DWI's, enhanceable, no insurance, though there's prior no insurance violations, and then driving after cancellation and minimal publicity. So those are really the areas that I handle. Juvenile matters are handled by the county attorney's office. All felony are handled by the county attorney's office. And anything outside the city limits handled by the county attorney's office. So that's kind of my slice of the pie. So as far as prosecuted offenses, what I define, those are basically anything that I put resources to. I spend any, pretty much any amount of time on. So that excludes pretty much any citation that's payable that never comes across my desk. Law enforcement issues them, somebody just pays it out of court, or also go to court here before the judge pro se, and the judge binds them, that and they move on. So also, there's some matters that I review that ultimately we don't charge. They're either referred to the county attorney's office for prosecution, or we determine they're outside the city limits. It happens a little bit, I think probably more so in two thousand fifteen than previous years. You know, not a huge increase or anything like that. You know, it just, I guess I've always been the position, send it to me, I'll review it. And if it's not mine, I'll make sure this is whatever people. So as far as it goes, fifty-six prosecuted offenses to this two thousand fifteen. That number's almost identical to two thousand fourteen, and that number has decreased a little bit since some of the other numbers, some of the previous years. So it did include a chart, I think figure one, that has a historical perspective of five years. And just for the benefit of some council members that haven't had to listen to me talk for many, many years, I started prosecuting for the city of Kenyon in July of two thousand ten. So two thousand eleven, my first full year, and so that's what I reported from. So of the total prosecuted offenses, traffic offenses, make up thirty of those, or fifty-four percent. Most of those are alcohol-related driving offenses. There's driving after withdrawal, which would be driving after suspension or no driver's license. There's some misdemeanor or petty miscellaneous petty misdemeanor traffic offenses, speeding and seatbelt violation, things like that, that are provided for insurance, marijuana, motor vehicle, and open bottle offenses. So not too much, I mean thirty, that's not a huge number by any means. So compared to two thousand fourteen, it's approximately the same as well. So yeah, figure two, actually, that has kind of a list of them as far as it goes. Yeah. It looks pretty good in color, you can follow the alcohol-related driving offenses, driving after withdrawals, misdemeanor petty offenses, and then no insurance violations, so pretty consistent. As far as community offenses, this is basically non-traffic offenses, there are twenty-six of these, forty-six percent approximately. That consists of probation violations or revocations of states of adjudication, assaults or order for protection violations, disorderly conduct, underage consumption, drug, paraphernalia, drug possession. So those numbers, exact same actually, or about the same as two thousand fourteen. There's a little bit of change, I think assaults were up, disorderly conduct's pretty consistent. So there's not a lot of change. I guess probation revocations or probation violations, that dropped from where it has been. Don't really, don't really know the reason why for that, but just people following in terms of conditions of probation and not not anymore. Figure three has a breakdown of the three offenses already up there, so you can see that probation violations have dropped. So as far as dispositions go, we are, we're very efficient actually in Goodview County. Perhaps we have three judges, they don't have a huge case load, but we move cases through. So of the fifty-six, fifty-one have been resolved, so over ninety-one percent have already been closed. And five remain open at the end of the year. Dismissal, or I guess disposition ranges anywhere from dismissal to fine or executed jail sentence. A lot of it depends on what the nature of the crime is, criminal history, things like that. Certainly with DWI's, if they're enhanced DWI's and the individual had priors within the preceding ten years, there's minimal mandatory sentences actually set by law, so pretty much a guarantee of jail time in that. And then cases kind of resolve at all stages of the game. Some are at first court appearance, some are pre-trials, some on the cert trial. I didn't, I don't think I had any trials for two thousand fifteen. Had a couple scheduled, but they resolved. I did have one in two thousand fourteen, an injury trial for Kenyon, which was a lot of fun. And we won, so that's good. As far as prosecution resources, so I try to do a decent job of keeping track of all my time that I devote exclusively to the city of Kenyon, and I send those to Sue and to Chief Sholander on a monthly basis. I'm pretty good at it, but I'm not great at it. So these are approximations. I know that there's time out there that I don't report. Quick phone call, you were there, I just don't write it down. So approximately eleven hours in two thousand fifteen. Two thousand fourteen was just about fifteen, so decrease in a couple hours. I don't know really what makes up for that, except maybe corporate keeping, but about the same. So then we attend, either myself or my partner Steve George, we attend court on second and fourth Thursday of each month. There's some days where we join our courts, November Thanksgiving bell on the fourth Thursday, so you can afford, but for the most part, it's the second and fourth Thursday. Sometimes we have additional court appearances outside of Thursdays, so if it's set up for jury trial, we're always set on Monday. But generally, it's Thursday or it's a Monday. And then as far as other time devoted to Kenyon's matters outside of court, we spend time drafting criminal complaints, communicating with defense attorneys, crime victims, law enforcement. We talk, we request discovery, process discovery requests, do any sort of pleadings or motions. And then, yeah, that's pretty much what we do. The other thing, I guess I'll note too, is we actually did draft nine criminal complaints in two thousand fifteen. That's, I think, higher than I remember. That's probably the most time intensive, but we're really working at a streamlined idea. They have a e-charging system to the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension, which is pretty slick when we're able to use it to its full functionality, but we have some tax issues which make it a little difficult, but we'll get that resolved and that makes it go ahead a lot smoothly. So as far as other time, I just mentioned, I do spend time collaborating with other, I guess we'll call them criminal justice partners, but other prosecutors, probation officers, other people in the system, what we do. I spend actually a fair amount of time reviewing court opinions, especially in the area of DWI, which is ever-changing. It won't go into all the changes, because certainly that would bore you guys and that would not probably produce the time, but I'll just say that the DWI in Minnesota is constantly changing, and there's two appellate cases right now that have ruled that the applied consent advisor is unconstitutional for blood and for urine. The Minnesota Supreme Court will hear both of those cases. And then there's actually a breath test case that has been appealed to the United States Supreme Court. And you think about Main Street in Kenyon and how far away Washington is, and you think, well, how is this ever going to impact what we do? But it certainly does. In fact, the attorney arguing that case is out of Birmingham area, and I see him all the time over, he becomes, he becomes a lot of people down in this area. So candidate, so we keep track of all that and try to figure out where we advise law enforcement to go on some of these search seizure issues in context of DWI. But I don't, I don't keep track of that time because it's not specifically for the purposes of Kenyon. I have other municipal clients that we do prosecution for, so I don't include that as my time to take. So there's a figure there for, that's figure four, talks about the hours of prosecution just comparative from the year before, so I'll, pretty much about the same, will decrease this year. And then as far as fine revenue, this is probably something that's important for you guys to know. So when defendants convicted of an offense, there's a base level fine based on either what the judge sets or based on statute, and then there's a court surcharge and a library fee on top of that. We get absolutely nothing from the surcharge and the library fee that goes to the state and to the county. The city of Kenyon receives two-thirds of the base fine amount, and so that amount is remitted to the city of Kenyon. There's a monthly report, which I receive, Mark, you may receive it, maybe not Lee, I think you may get it, but it just does a breakdown of what's been received. So I get those reports, compile those. So the good news is, we're up forty percent from last year. So monthly revenue ranges anywhere from a hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-five cents to fourteen thousand eight-two-oh-two. With an average of just over seven dollars per year. So that's up from last year. Not the greatest year, I think two thousand twelve was our greatest year. I think that's when we had that eager young officer who stopped everything that moved. Worked well for money, but not, not going to talk about it. Yeah. So other than that, really appreciate the opportunity to come and present this. I really enjoy serving the city of Kenyon, really enjoy working with local law enforcement. So it certainly can answer any questions you guys have.
I've got one. Total charge of prosecuted offenses is down one this year. But the fine revenue was up forty, approximately forty percent. Was this a function of more serious cases, or were fines increased across the board?
I would say, it's my opinion that it's probably the type of offenses, there's probably more DWI's and actually, based on the fact that we drafted nine complaints, probably more enhanced DWI's or gross misdemeanors where the fine, it actually, the fine amount is greater. I would say that's probably a good way to describe it. Interestingly enough, on gross misdemeanor offense, the minimum mandatory fine is actually nine hundred dollars. However, in my tenure, I have never once had a judge in Goodview County impose even a mandatory minimum fine. So we try, we work hard at that. Ultimately, when we're looking at gross misdemeanor DWI's, the fine is only part of, part of the medicine.
So the fine revenue is kind of a mixed blessing. It's a little bit more money coming in, but it's also an indication that there have been some more severe issues.
I, I think that's probably fair to say, yeah. Any question? Well, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Do you have, yeah.
So we can move on to engineering. Joe, update on First Street reconstruction project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At your meeting last month, you approved the plans for the First Street reconstruction project and authorized us to issue the advertisement for bids, to call for those bids to be received. We proceeded with that activity, the ad did, has appeared in the local newspaper and also in the construction trade newspaper, and it's been posted electronically online. So the project is out for bids right now. Not a lot of an update. We're scheduled to take bids on Thursday the twenty-fifth of February at two and a half noon here at City Hall. So far, I've gotten a question from one contractor as all, but that's not unusual. Typically, contractors on a project this, really start looking at it hard in the last couple of weeks before the bids. So I expect the activity will start to pick up next week and then really intensify that last week as they're putting their numbers together. But everything is on track, no surprises, nothing out of the ordinary. Everything's proceeding along, right on track towards that bid opening on February twenty-fifth.
And do you have any further updates on the fire facility project?
Yes, actually, we can talk about that here. The architect is continuing to work, and we're continuing to work on the plans. We had a team meeting, one is technology, we were able to all submit our plans to the architect to compile them all, and then we were able to, using our computers, be able to view all the plans together and be on the phone so we could all discuss the plans and review them and coordinate our activities with each other. So the plans are essentially at fifty percent completion right now, and we're at the point where the architect would like to schedule a meeting with the city to sit down and review the plans, where they're at. There's questions that the architect has on some of the things for the, you know, how the plumbing is going to be laid out and how we're going to maintain the site. Information they want to get from the city and from the fire department, so that they can use that information in finishing the design. And also, it's an opportunity for the city to review the plans where they're at and comment on how they're coming along and how things are laying out, so provide feedback and ask questions that will help direct the completion of the design as well. So the plans are in very good shape. I was very happy with the plans that we reviewed last week, but the next step is to have a meeting with the city to review the status of the plans, let us ask the questions we have, let the city ask the questions it has, and provide feedback and comment to guide the rest of the design purpose. The plans are still on track for being completed in the early part of March, and we're still on track for a bid date by the end of April, if everything falls into place. The other part of it, besides the design, is the USDA application. We're still in stage two of that, as I mentioned last month, there's about thirty-two items that we have to complete in stage two, and we've got about eighty percent of those done. We're still working on the last handful of items, and they should be wrapped up within the next couple of weeks. But we've been submitting the items as we've gotten them done, they've been reviewing them and submitting them on the checklist, so we're still on track with that. So everything is still pointing towards a bid date in the second half of April. So really, the follow-up action for tonight is to get that, to pick out some times and dates for that potential meeting, to review the fifty percent plans. Obviously, there's some people from the city staff that need to be at that meeting. The administrator needs to be at the meeting, the fire chief would need to be at the meeting. We'd certainly like to have the public works superintendent, Steve Ballson, there, and the public, excuse me, the utility superintendent, Randy, at that meeting, so we can get their input on how the utility services for the building and those types of things. From our side, from the design side, both Corey and John will be there from the architects, I would be there to work on the civil design. The plumber would be there, that's working on the mechanical and plumbing design, to ask questions if he's got on how he's laying out his systems. The meeting will last about three hours. It's going to be a very thorough meeting to review the plans, ask the questions, gather information. We'll also be looking at things like color schemes for the carpeting and the painting and those types of things, getting input on that. So it's going to be a very significant meeting, so we need to find a time that everyone can devote a three-hour chunk of time to have this meeting. And one of the questions is, should that meeting be a day, a meeting that happens during the business day, where it's essentially held at a staff level? Or would the council prefer that it be held in the evening and have it be more set up as a council work session type of meeting, where the council is there and can have input and ask questions as well? So that's one of the discussions tonight is, what should that meeting be scheduled, day or evening, and then pick out some times so that we can coordinate schedules and get a meeting set? We'd like to have the meeting next week at the latest, even if we could still get it done this week would be fine as well.
So basically, this, you know, is more of a working, like Joe said, a staff level meeting? I don't, I will tell you guys, I don't think this is the kind of meeting that, you know, like a full council meeting kind of mechanism where you go, because literally, this is going to be the, kind of like where you go through the Azbills and you go through every little thing, and I think it's, but I mean, we certainly can do it that way, but I just want to be kind of clear that this is not, like, when the plans are done, we'll have a council work session. Corey will walk through the major points, but when Corey walks through the major points, he's going to talk about the office layout, he's going to talk about the layout of the bays, and it'll be pretty extensive, but he's not going to talk about, okay, the water line is going to come in here, you know, this wall's going to be painted a certain color. And I mean, that's the level of the way this, this meeting is. And even on a good clip, this meeting is going to probably be at least, you know, three hours doesn't, well, it doesn't surprise me that it'd be more than that. So I just want, want the council to be aware of that. This is, it's almost, it's not the kind of normal meeting where the council goes through, you know, a building with the architect, or, you know, when the architect's at his stage meetings, it's more of a staff level, I guess is about the best way I can describe it. So anyway, I just.
Not a meeting for any council action?
Correct. No council decisions will be needed. It won't be a meeting where there's any major changes in scope discussed, definitely. It's more refinement, you know, and then putting the, you know, dotting the i's, crossing the t's on the design to make sure, like Mark said, we know where's the best place that the water line's going to come in and the diameter that is needed for, you know, working with the operations of how the building's going to function. So there's no scope, there'll be no scope revisions or changes made at the meeting, it's more of to refine and gathering information we need to get the design completed. As Mark indicated, once the design's complete, that design with the updated cost estimate will come back to the city and council, and legally, you'll have the ability to review and approve that design before it would go out any further in the process.
And all that being said, our schedules are immaterial, really, is when this meeting will be scheduled, time or the date. If some of us were able to, wished to be there, we could, but there's no necessity to coordinate it with our schedules.
Right. I mean, this, I don't, there's really no, you know, like, sensitive information that's talked about at a meeting like this, you know, nothing like that. So I mean, it's not that it couldn't be an open meeting. I think normally, this kind of meeting might, you know, be, if there's a couple council people there, there's a committee or, you know, whatever, they might come maybe, but, you know, I mean, we're not trying to discourage it, I mean, we certainly can.
To be on the same side, I suppose it has to be posted as, "Quorum may be present."
Well, that's kind of what we were hoping to find out tonight, is if the council, I mean, if you want to attend this, and yeah, we're just going to post it, hold it out here, and that's fine, but.
Gentlemen? I don't know enough about construction to contribute much of anything. So I think it's more important that Randy and Steve. Well, certainly. Personally, I'd sort of like to at least be around for part of it, but that all depends on when it is, because I do have other things.
And when the meeting is, whether.
Right.
Yeah.
And Fred, you have any remarks?
Well, I guess it depends upon the guys that are coming to this, or just like, you just got a set of time?
Yeah.
But there's got to be.
They're not, they're not trying to do anything at that meeting that we couldn't undo at a later date, if it's something we're all really strong about.
If we don't like the wall color they picked, we could always mix it later.
We could go paint the walls ourselves if we don't like what they picked.
Yes, okay.
And I guess that's the biggest thing for a scheduled meeting, is if you all wanted to be there and wanted to have it as a work session, then we're probably going to be an evening meeting, but if you're giving us flexibility, then realistically, it's probably going to be your schedule during the day.
People need to be there, if some of us should happen to show up.
So is scheduled a time that works for staff and inform council when it's going to be, and you have the option to attend if you're available and interested?
The only problem being, if two or three of us happen to show up, then we would have had to have posted it. Whereas right now, if we don't have that, we don't have to post it.
Well, right, and if we, you know, get into the posting requirement of generally seventy-two, let's just say seventy-two hours, and we try to do it this week, which would be, I'd like to, you know, do it sooner the better, Thursday or Friday, then we kind of get into, that becomes more difficult, and it's not really an emergency kind of meeting or anything like that. Thursday or Friday, then we kind of get into, that becomes more difficult and it's not really an emergency kind of meeting or anything like that.
Well, I mean, the only other issue we have as well, if it becomes a posted meeting, then the public can also attend and be there. It's up to, you know, staff and council if you want other parties there with you trying to work through this.
Which realistically is not likely to happen, but.
It is not, but it can happen.
Right.
You know, people that show up.
It's never in the past happened, but.
No, but, you know, but that's just the other issue. If it's not a posted meeting, you're not going to council. It's not going to be public at that point.
Yeah. I guess my feeling would be if you can pull it together to get it done yet this week and there isn't time to post it. We'll just make darn sure that no more than two of us show up.
I will consciously vow that I won't show up.
I'll take the same. How we going? So, you guys.
So Fred, yeah, you and Mike.
So, yeah, so we showed up, there'd be no problem. Everybody else, um.
Okay.
Do it.
Okay. Thank you, council. We'll, we'll work. Mark and I will work on, find the time that works for all the required staff.
Okay.
And work on that.
Sounds good.
Transportation funding, resolution twenty sixteen dash zero five, resolution supporting dedicated state funding for city streets. Uh, this is a model ordinance from the, uh.
What a resolution.
A resolution rather, from the, uh. The league's, correct?
Yeah.
Correct. I, I can bring a little background on it. Um, two weeks ago, we held our annual conference, the City Engineers Association in Minnesota, where all of the city engineers are invited from the state to attend a three-day conference where we have speakers and presentations on various topics of interest for engineering. It helps us with our continuing education requirement for our licenses. Uh, one of the presentations was given by the League of Minnesota Cities. And their emphasis of the presentation was on transportation funding and the activity at the legislature this coming session. Um, and they handed out information and, and flash drives, of course, uh, with, with summary statements on their positions on transportation funding. And just a couple of highlights. One is transportation funding is the most challenging funding for the local agencies to, to manage. Because unlike your sewer and water, you can set rates to generate the revenues you need to operate, maintain your sewer and water system. Same with stormwater. The legislature gives you the ability to, to do a stormwater utility charge and gather revenue to, to operate, maintain and manage your stormwater infrastructure. But on transportation, there really is no mechanism like that. So with transportation, you're really, uh, limited to property tax increases, uh, general fund dollars, uh, special assessments when you have a project like, like First Street. And so it's really difficult for local agencies to generate the funds they need to improve their local roads. Um, one of the, and they, you've seen in your packet, the information the, the league put out called the, the transportation myths on the funding. Is that everyone knows there's the gas tax and everyone knows there's tax on motor vehicle sales and on license registrations. However, ninety-five percent of that money is already dedicated before it ever comes into the, to the state. So none of that money makes it to a local agency such as the City of Kenyon for use on its local roads. Uh, cities over five thousand population get a small amount of money through the municipal state aid program. But that's only for certain streets within their cities. And again, you have to be a city of over five thousand population to even qualify for that program. So smaller cities such as Kenyon, uh, can't get any of that money as well. Um, last year, there was a one-time program that the legislature came up with and they found some money and made one-time allocations to the cities. And I think City of Kenyon got about forty-five thousand, Mark, I think you indicated, um, as a one-time thing. There's no guarantee that will happen again this year or ever again. Um, so what the league has put together is, they're, they're really trying to work with the legislature and indicate to them how important it is that funding is found for transportation throughout the state, of course. Uh, but especially for local agencies to be able to, to invest in their local street and infrastructure systems. So they did prepare a model of resolution that they provided and asked if we would bring to our city councils and see if the city council would be interested in, in passing those resolutions. And then we can provide it to the league and they can bring it to the legislature in their session and show how many cities support transportation funding. So essentially the, the resolution boils down to the bottom where it says, uh, the City of Kenyon would support the legislature passing an ominous transportation funding bill that provides additional dedicated funding for city streets, including funding that can be used for non-municipal state aid cities. So those cities under five thousand. And that would be for street maintenance, construction and reconstruction. So that resolution has been provided for your consideration tonight. Um, again, it was prepared by the, the League of Minnesota Cities. We just updated with the specific information for the City of Kenyon. And this is something that they're asking cities to continue to consider adopting.
I'm definitely in favor of that. Is that in the form of a motion to adopt this resolution? Well, it will, and I was just in favor of it if we're going to discuss it, is all. I'm in favor of the resolution. Any other comments?
Yeah.
I will second your motion.
Well, I'll make the motion official. Resolution two oh one six dash oh five is the motion that I have. Shall we accept it? Um, Richard seconded. I'm in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. So, we move on then to legal. City council salary increase, uh, I brought up that, uh, sheet that I compiled from the, um, mayor's association lists or, or the cities that chose to answer. And, uh, do you have any comments on this?
Well, I just a comment that from what you have, I've given you, uh, just some pages. One is the act of ordinance you have in place right now. The other is the statute that shows what is in play. Um, and that the, any change you would make would be effective after the, the next election, if applied to everybody. Um, last time we did it was in October of two thousand and two. So it's been thirteen, almost thirteen and a half years at this point in time. And it's clearly, as you can see, there's two articles. One is the League of Minnesota Cities handbook page and an article from two thousand and four, I believe, uh, from the Minnesota Cities Magazine. It's clearly within your authority to set the salary and however you see that. It's for discretion. Does have to be adopted by ordinance and then again, it takes effect after the next election. So, it was a really long process, yeah.
And looking at that survey there, the cities that were in our approximate population range that were a bit higher had just recently changed there.
Yeah, likely. I mean, it's been a while. Obviously, there is a while.
Some commented, oh, it's been, been ineffective for sixteen years or.
Yep.
Some had no idea how long it had lasted.
Yeah, it was probably changed in the last cities, in all honesty. And you can see, uh, well, I, I, it, it did go up. I don't tell you the exact amount it went up the last time. Um, it went from, it was previously fifteen hundred and the mayor's salary went up to twenty-five hundred. And it was seventeen hundred and went up to nineteen hundred for, excuse me, twelve hundred went to nineteen hundred for the council.
Uh, it was thirteen.
Thirteen, oh, almost thirteen and a half, thirteen years, four months ago, yeah.
Mayor, on this sheet that, uh, you compiled here, you know, uh, how, how recent is that? Have you got an idea from these?
This was during, during twenty fifteen that these emails came in. Some of the, like Lewiston, there's, that rate just went into effect beginning of this year.
Is, is this stuff that you sent out or is this the one from the league?
This is off the, uh.
The league's?
Mayor's Association.
Oh, the Mayor's Association. I, I know the league also compiles and does the salary survey as well. So there may be some additional cities you can look at.
Yeah, I'm sure there are. This is just the information that I have. When these came, interesting things come through and I'll save those emails in a folder and then can refer back to them later. And I guess at this point, this is just a, uh, matter of here is where we are. This is how long it's been, the way it is. There's no reason to, uh, take any sudden action because it wouldn't go into effect till next year anyway.
Yeah, typically what we've done is the date would be January first after the next election. So it would be next January first. If you did it this year before, who would run the election?
Right, in theory, I suppose go into effect in December of this year.
Yeah, I, I guess that might be.
Says after the next election.
You're right, you're right. I, I've never done, though, it would, it would, that's true.
You guys will make more of a work. You know how I am harsh on every word of a statute.
Every clerk's conference or administrator's conference I've been at, everybody says, well, you gotta wait till the new people take office, which really isn't true either. That's not what the statute says. So, yeah, I'll give you that.
Any comments, anyone?
I'd like to table it for a while. Maybe it'll go away.
We're dying for the money.
That's, that's how I'm feeling about it. You know, we're talking about fire hall. We're talking about a lot of expenses. And then we come along and they're talking about a raise. I don't think right now is the appropriate time to do it. And you look at their sheet that, uh, the mayor has put together here, uh, might feel quite fortunate to be on.
They're, they're right in the mid-range of other cities of this. They said that some have just recently increased. Those are the higher ones. Ones that are lower than us, uh, there were comments that, oh, it's been at this rate since nineteen ninety-six or. So, it's probably something that should happen at some point. Uh, one thing to take into consideration, it's true, we're not, none of us are in this to make a lot of money. However, it's, we're all getting the old graybeards and in order to get some younger people involved, people that have families. Some compensation for their time could make a difference to them. You've got families that are, uh, working two, three jobs between, uh, between them and have children to take care of. They maybe like to be involved, but they can't take the time away from their lives where the compensation could make it possible sometimes. Consideration. So, all that being said, we could move on now to old business. Item A, request for proposal on garbage service.
So, uh, you have the RFP that we sent out, um, for solid waste collection, as we discussed at the last council meeting. Um, a lot of this is taken from the policy and from, uh, the administrative policy that covers solid waste pickup. And then also from the current contract that we had with, we have with Waste Management, which is pretty similar to the one that the city has in front of us. So the basis of this is, uh, you know, a lot of it really, if there's one thing, it's the contract that's based on. Um, and I want to emphasize a couple of things, one of which is, um, I said in my memo that this is due back on the twenty-sixth of February. And then I'm looking at the next week to try to have some kind of a meeting to go through those RFPs. Um, and one thing that I, and I don't know, Scott, you might be able to shed some light on this, the best way to proceed, um, with this, not tonight, but from when they come in on, to keep this from becoming a three-ring circus, is, you know, I mean, it would be nice if we opened the RFPs and it was like this or. But, you know, the concern is that one or two of them or more are going to show up. And then when you go through them, they're going to want to talk about them and say, you know, well, we'll do this or that differently. I've heard this happen over and over again.
Yeah, it has. And they, you had the changes on the organized collection where a lot of that has come to the forefront. You're seeing that a lot in media. That's not what we're doing. We're not going down that process. This is strictly a contract that's out there that the council has the discretion to do. And you don't have to take any comments from any of the responders at all if you don't want to. Just analyze what they've provided to Mark and go on staff recommendation. So really you do control that and you could stop that meeting if you wanted to.
I know without being specific, the one, I've talked to several of the haulers and one of the haulers told me that, you know, he wanted to know when we were going to meet and when the council would go through this, whether it would be the March council meeting or a special meeting. Cause he said he would like to quote unquote, "talk to the council about his quote" and see if there's exactly what I'm talking about. And it's like, no. I mean, this isn't a, it, in all fairness, when I look at RFPs, I like to think that each company gives their best number and that's what you fairly compare from one to another.
Yes.
Instead of somebody coming in saying, well, I'll lower my price or do this and that. Well, you should have put it in there to begin with. That's the case.
A request for proposal, not an invitation to a bargaining session.
No, and, and nor is, it's not a bid either. So really it is your discretion on how you want to handle it. But treating it more like a bid where, as Mark said, you're looking and analyzing what's been provided as the best proposal. If you have questions, that, that's one thing. But to, to build in a, you know, five, ten, twenty-five minute, hour-long presentation, no.
No.
I don't think you want to do that.
Absolutely not. And waste management too would be another one that would probably have a, several representatives here. You know, that, that, that's the same, same animal, you know?
Yeah.
So I just want the council to be aware of that and especially the mayor. And the other thing is when this, and it says that in here, but basically this decision really needs to be looked at globally, not just the number they give, but experience. Um, and, you know, just what, what you know of the company already. And, I mean, it's more than just numbers when you look at this. And so I, I think that has to really be emphasized that this decision does not have to be based on the OS quote, nor maybe should it be. And I think you have to look at who's going to provide the most, um, stable, efficient service to the city. And, and obviously cost is part of the decision, but it's not, I don't know how it fits in, in a percentage. But I mean, it, you know, it's, it's a good thing, part of this to consider, but I think there's other things that really have to come into play here when, when you review this. So, and I just, I wanted to, that's a lot of the reason I put this on the agenda was kind of to talk about the process more than the proposal itself. But this is a very common practice. I was really surprised when I looked on them, um, both in Minnesota and then I Googled RFPs. My goodness, there is a ton of cities that do this kind of thing all over the country. And they've got proposals anywhere from three, four pages to literally like forty. It's just unreal. And, you know, the bigger ones are bigger cities, but a lot of cities do this where they'll contract with the hauler and then they do billing. I mean, I was really surprised at it. And then I don't know number-wise how many do in Minnesota, but it's just a lot more than I realized. Even like Sepulveda, you know, uh, and a lot of cities have single haulers, but this, it's just really cutthroat. It's unbelievable how much interest we've had in this thing. You know, I'm still amazed that, going back to when Ron sold to Waste Management, how many companies contacted us from, you know, twenty miles away, Rochester? It's crazy, you know? So there must be more to, more to this than I guess I would ever realize. Scott's probably seen this.
Yeah, it, it's a competitive environment, but the reality is the city has the ability to deal with one or as many as you like. And it's really discretion you have as a council.
Well, there's a little sin.
And Doug, you're going to be probably drawn at that point. So one thing is I'll give you the results that come in. And then maybe we can talk about it before the council meeting. So if you have, you know, thoughts, I'll, you know, you know, pass them on to the council.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, because this is.
Appreciate that.
It's a big deal.
Yeah. Well, I can ask one right now. I may be on the left field, but are, are we basically looking at one hauler? Well, I can ask one right now. I may be out in left field, but are, are we basically looking at one hauler? Or recycling and garbage?
No, it's just garbage right now.
Just what?
Just garbage. Recycling would be up at the end of the year.
Okay, okay.
I mean, and I don't think there's any issues with that right now.
Okay, that's.
So this is just for residential garbage pickup.
Okay, very good.
So I don't know if there's any questions. I mean, that's all I have on this.
I have nothing more to add or to question at this point. I'm certainly going to be interested to see what the response is to the proposals are that come in.
Yeah, I am too. Cause I'm expecting seven or eight probably that will get, six to eight probably. The one thing that may change some people from quoting it is the possibility of having a haul up to Redline.
Yes, yes.
That may affect it. So we may not get as many, especially from like the West. You know, Flum is one that I think will respond and they don't, I think, I think they've taken that into account. But I think some other haulers, that may not be the case.
Can they wear it?
Oh, yeah. I've talked to him about that.
Still don't know what's, what's going to happen on that.
No, we don't. I mean, but we have to assume it's gonna go that direction, but hasn't yet, so we'll see.
So, item B, update on twenty sixteen EDA annual meeting.
So there was just some items. Again, this is just information that I wanted to just talk about, highlight a little bit. I guess basically just kinda highlight the annual meeting. I think we had a good turnout and a good meeting. The meeting was held at Full Craft. And I think we really had a good turnout and very good discussion. Some of the things that I wanted to talk about, some highlights from the meeting that were, some items that were talked about. Incentives for new home construction. This is not a new thing with the council or the EDA, but the EDA's talked about this last year. And I think there's a lot of support for this. But the EDA talked about trying to offer basically down payment assistance for owner-occupied new construction that would go, be built in the city, somewhere in the range of fifteen hundred to three thousand dollars. And the other caveat of that being that the, that Bigelow would also contribute toward that in addition to what the EDA might do. And Bigelow's already told me they would. But there, I think the owner, Joel, the president, has been gone south for a while, so I haven't been able to connect with him. But Stu was gonna try to, Campbell, the president of the bank, was gonna try to talk to him about this. The EDA is gonna discuss this further on February twenty-third, they're gonna have a special meeting. Possible sites for additional commercial industrial land. There's no major change here except at the meeting at Full Craft, the president of Full Craft did throw out to the EDA that the, that they would be, Full Craft would be interested in selling thirty-acre hauler, part of a thirty-acre parcel that they have directly south of their plant right now. So that's another thing that's gonna be talked about on the twenty-third. And the president was gonna go back, I think, and talk to his board and try to gather some more information. I did put some, just a picture and some of the tax information in the, or was passed out here before the meeting, so you have that. But, you know, the site location-wise would be really, I think, a good site. There, there's some low area kind of in the middle that will have to, you know, be determined, you know, if that's gonna be an issue. But, you know, that's, you know, maybe not all the sites usable, maybe part of it is. I think it's a, it's a good, you know, a good thing. So, anyway. So that was kind of a, kind of exciting, I guess, new development with our continual quest to try to find some land. And another thing too I wanted to talk about, this might be down the road a little bit here, but conducting some type of a business retention expansion survey. And there's information, I won't go through this whole thing, but this is a program that the University of Minnesota Extension Service has done for, dating myself, but probably since the late eighties. And I've been involved with this both as a economic development director and as a, actually a liaison with the Extension Service in a couple of them, where I went out and was paid to kinda work with some communities and as an advisor. So I've, I've worked with this, it's been a while since I've been involved with it. But I'd like to see this done on a county-wide basis, cause I think there's a lot of benefit to having a larger volume but of, of companies and businesses to be visited. But, you know, if that doesn't pan out, I mean, I think that there could be some type of a program that a city like us could do, or us and one may know or whatever. But it's really kinda cured it more of a regional kinda thing. And it doesn't take away from the recommendations and the things that benefit to any community. If groups of communities work together, I think it really benefits everybody. But, anyway, that was another thing that we talked about.
How far has that worked out with the, the past regions that have done it?
Well, I think it's worked out well. I mean, I, I can only talk about the ones I've been involved with. The last one I was involved with was the City of Eagan in about two thousand and one. But the key thing is, well, there's two parts of it. One is, there's immediate follow-up when groups of, you know, it's basically, the survey is done by visitation. And the visitation is like an outreach from the city to the business saying, we care about you. And we wanna hear what your concerns are, what your plans are in the future. What's stopping you from expanding or, you know, what are things that are good about being here? I mean, all these things are covered in the survey. What happens then is, besides the short-term visit where you may find out that a business says, well, we're thinking about closing or relocating, or we're having problems with our street, there's things that will come out that can be addressed more immediately than by the city or they're referred out to like electric providers, gas providers, you know, just the county. I mean, different, depending on what it is. And then the long-term benefit is that there's a, the University Extension Service will put together specific recommendations based on the survey results. Those recommendations may be that you need more access to high-speed fiber. You need more capital, like low-interest loans. That doesn't come out so much now, it used to thirty, twenty years ago, a lot more. They might need more, labor will be a big thing that will come out in any survey now, guaranteed. Labor's a big, acute problem and it's a fear a lot of employers have now for the future. Everybody's got this fear because of demographics. That will come out. They may recommend that we work with technical schools to try to develop customized training programs. You know, there's a lot of different things that could come out, but there's steps like that. And then, like, the EDA can take those and, and some of them are short-term steps that are implemented and some of them may take longer. But it's a really good program. But to get the really big bang from it though, it's, it's a fair amount of work. And it really does help to have a bigger base to work from. That's why I say it, it works really well for counties. Cause a county's a distinct economic unit. You've got data. And then the Extension Service will go back and look at demographic data, unemployment pattern, commuting trends, all kinds of stuff falls into this. So they do a lot of work and it's, it's a really good program. So, anyway, I threw this out because I think it's something that we need to start talking about. It may be later this year before things get rolling, it may be next year, but I'd really like to see us try to do something. And then we also talked about trying to do a survey of just people in the community to see if there's interest in the city expending money to buy land, you know, in fact. Now, that maybe could come through the newspaper doing a poll. Maybe we can put something in the newsletter. But that's another thing too that we talked about. So, talking about surveys.